Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegacounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the "Register" button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the "in-person" option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit "Register," and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. I will now call the April 8, 2025 General Legislative Session of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to order. We'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the land that we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States. We aspire to learn from the indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer would like to know that Supervisor Desmond is absent. With that, Supervisor Anderson.
Present.
Supervisor Montgomery-Step.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. Okay. We were very honored to have the Girls Out of San Diego lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in our volunteer recognition ceremony this morning. So we will now have Reverend Dr. Caleb Lines from the University Christian Church deliver the invocation. Please stand for the invocation.
Good morning and greetings on behalf of University Christian Church in Hillcrest, and thank you all for the important work you're doing. It's an honor and a privilege to be here this morning. Friends, I invite us all to find a quiet place with a source of grounding for you, whatever that might be. We gather today in gratitude for the opportunity to serve our beloved community of San Diego County. In this space of decision-making, may we be guided by wisdom, courage, and a deep sense of compassion for all who call this place home. All who call this place home. We recognize the sacred worth of every person, of every race, faith, background, sexual orientation, and gender identity. And we commit ourselves to building a county where justice is not just an ideal, but a lived reality for each and every person here. May we lead with humility, listen with empathy, and act with integrity. May we protect the vulnerable, honor the earth, and steward our resources with care. Let us not shy away from hard conversations or bold actions when it is needed for the common good. In divisive times, may we lean into our humanity and practice compassion. In the spirit of love that knows no boundaries, we pray. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will now proceed with the proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by myself honoring the San Diego County District Attorney's Consumer Protection Unit, accepting the proclamation by Rachel Sala.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all for being here. It's not every day we get to honor a group of public servants who go after the bad guys and actually win. So today, it is my absolute pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to the powerhouse team in the District Attorney's Consumer Protection Unit, on the front lines, holding corporations accountable, and making sure San Diegans don't get ripped off. You know that sneaking feeling when your phone mysteriously slows down just days after Apple releases a new version of the iPhone? This team went after Apple for secretly throttling the devices and won. Or when you sign up for "fast internet", quote-unquote, after sifting through a confusing mess of packages, bundles, and fine print, only to end up apologizing to your daughter again when Frozen 2 keeps buffering. Yep, they tackled Time Warner for false advertising, too. And they did not stop there. We're talking tens of millions of dollars in penalties and restitution, real money back into the pockets of San Diego consumers. So whether you've been overcharged at the grocery store, duped by a deceptive ad, or just had that gut feeling something wasn't right, this unit has your back. The truth is, most people don't have the time, resources, or energy to fight back when they get ripped off. That's why this team matters. Because behind the legal work and courtroom wins, what they're really delivering is fairness, dignity, and peace of mind. So thank you for your relentless pursuit of justice, your leadership, and your results. And thank you for reminding all of us that public service can still mean standing up to powerful interests and winning. So today, on behalf of the County of San Diego, I'm proud to officially declare this Consumer Protection Unit Day in San Diego County. Let's give them a big round of applause. Someone want to say something?
Yes. Rachel Sala.
Go ahead. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rachel Sala. I'm a chief deputy at the District Attorney's Office, and I have the honor of having this incredible unit in my chain of command. First, I want to apologize on behalf of District Attorney Summer Steffan for not being here. She had another commitment in Sacramento meeting on some public safety issues that was scheduled before this, but specifically wanted to apologize to each of you because she is so proud of the incredible work that you do and the way that you represent her and this office and the community. So thank you for that. This division, this unit, the Consumer Protection Unit, has over 50 years of experience in our office. They were founded in 1971, so over 50 years. Incredibly, too, the team that we have has over 137 years of actual experience litigating both civilly and criminal in the enforcement of consumer protection laws. So it's really outstanding. It's the most amount of experience of any local Consumer Protection Unit in the state. So we're really proud of that. I would like to just take a moment to introduce the team. Division Chief Brendan McHugh, who leads this team fearlessly. Tom Papa George, who is the lead prosecutor on this team, who is literally the guy that wrote the book on the subject. And we really thank him for his expertise. Deputy District Attorney Steve Spinella, Colleen Hushka, and Catherine Turner, who are also behind me, and the incredible support staff that helps them do this work. Today, we have Michelle Champagne and Alexis Buchanan. And watching online is Gina Petty and Amalia Matthews. So we really thank them for their work. As the supervisor mentioned, this team goes after very large corporations for wrongdoing. They also do work every day to protect the everyday consumer. We are all consumers. We all have to go out and purchase necessities, whether it be groceries or gas. And in addition to going after the big corporations for consumers, they hold businesses accountable to make sure that when we buy necessities, the scanners scan the right price, the gas pumps pump the right amount of gas. And that affects our everyday lives. And so we're really grateful for the work that they do. It also helps businesses that are doing things honestly, right? The unfair competition. So in addition to going after companies and businesses for wrongdoing, it helps the companies that are really trying to operate honestly be able to fairly compete. Lastly, and most importantly, I think to everyone in this room listening, we're all consumers. We all have to go out and buy things. And so if you think that you've been ripped off, if you observe some unfair business practices or something to that effect, you can report it directly to the District Attorney's website, and it will go to this outstanding team. And because of the partnerships and the relationships that they have built throughout the state and throughout the nation, if it is not the right place for that report, they will be able to leverage that experience and those relationships and get it to the right agency or department to make sure that the wrong is corrected and that people are held accountable. So thank you very much again. Thank you, Supervisor Lawson Reamer, for honoring the incredible work of this team. We're really grateful for the recognition. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Here, let's get a photo.
Totally awesome. The official bearer of proclamation. Brendan, will you write it?
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. The next proclamation will be given by myself and Supervisor Montgomery-Step honoring Child Abuse Prevention Month. Accepting the proclamation will be Tracy Pryor and Alfredo Guardaro. You're first.
Good morning, everyone. It's really a privilege to stand here before you and recognize April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to come together to raise awareness, strengthen families, and commit to protecting the well-being of every child in our community. This month is a reminder that preventing child abuse and neglect is a shared responsibility. In San Diego County, we have a dedicated network of professionals, volunteers, and community partners who work to prevent child abuse and support families. From social workers and law enforcement officers to educators and healthcare providers, these individuals are on the front lines helping to identify and address the warning signs of abuse. But the truth is, we all have a role to play in protecting children. Child abuse can take many forms: physical, emotional, sexual, and neglect. And it affects children of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life. It's so crucial that we take proactive steps to prevent abuse before it happens and intervene as early as possible when abuse is suspected. As a community, we must continue to work together to raise awareness about the signs of child abuse. And it's not always easy to recognize, but we can all learn those subtle signs that a child may be suffering. The key is to speak up. When we see something, we have to say something. Reporting suspected abuse can be difficult, but it can make the difference between a child being trapped in an unsafe environment and receiving the help that they need to heal and move forward. In San Diego County, we are fortunate to have many organizations dedicated to child abuse prevention, and a few of them are here with us today. These organizations play an essential role in providing prevention programs, support services, and advocacy for children and families. But we all know, even with these incredible resources, there's always more work to be done. The fight to end child abuse doesn't stop at just awareness. It requires ongoing commitment, action, and collaboration from each of us. So as we move throughout the month, I encourage each and every one of you to take part in events and initiatives. We all have a responsibility and duty to learn more about how we can help to support our local child advocacy organizations. And most importantly, let's commit to making San Diego County a place where every child is valued and protected. And now I'll turn it over to the vice chair.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm honored to be here alongside Supervisor Montgomery-Step to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month and commend the DA's office, the Child and Family Well-Being Department, and the many dedicated community partners who work tirelessly to keep our children safe and our families supported. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about the importance of preventing child abuse and neglect, promoting family well-being, and highlighting how our entire community plays a role in protecting children and strengthening families. The Child and Family Well-Being Department has continued to strengthen its partnerships with organizations like Promises to Kids, the District Attorney's Offices, YMCA's Partners in Prevention, Rady Children's Hospital, the San Diego County Office of Education, Palomar Health, and so many others. These collaborations reflect a shared commitment to early intervention, prevention, and trauma-informed care. Over the past decade, the number of children affected by abuse and neglect in San Diego County has decreased by 51%. And the number of children entering foster care has dropped by 53%, reflecting the success of child abuse prevention efforts. So this proclamation is not only a call to action, but also a celebration of the hard work being done across all these sectors every single day. It recognizes the ongoing efforts to create safe nurturing environments where all children can thrive. So be it proclaimed by the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this eighth day of April 2025 that we commend the County of San Diego's Child and Family Well-Being Department for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County and do hereby declare this month to be Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout San Diego County.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and Supervisor Montgomery-Step. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Child and Family Well-Being Department. The Child and Family Well-Being Department is deeply committed to ensuring the safety, stability, and well-being of children and families we serve every day. We are strengthened by our collaboration with community partners and county departments to prevent entry into foster care. Rather than focusing solely...
You're being disruptive. You're disrupting the conduct of the meeting. That was your first warning. If it happens again, you're going to be asked to vacate this room. Thank you.
Rather than focusing solely on foster care as a safety intervention, we are prioritizing a proactive approach empowering children, youth, and families with resources, connections... a proactive approach empowering children, youth, and families with resources, connections, and support they need to thrive and stay together. Through these partnerships, we are making it easier for families to access essential services that reinforce their strengths and create lasting stability. While child protection and foster care remains a critical part of our mission, we recognize that fostering strong, connected communities with accessible support can significantly reduce the number of children entering foster care. We deeply appreciate this recognition on our collective efforts here in San Diego to prevent child abuse and build a brighter future for families. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. My name is Tracy Pryor. I'm one of Summer Stephan's chief deputies, and I just want to thank the county and the board and the supervisors today for sponsoring this proclamation. On behalf of Summer Stephan and this army of Avengers who work in child protection behind me, we appreciate the board recognizing this day. There is information and power in collaboration and resources, and we do this as a child protection team in three ways that we call the three Ps. First, we have specially trained prosecutors. The chief of our Family Protection Division, Melissa Diaz, is here today, experts in their field, who simply put, hold accountable those who prey on our county's kids. Prosecutions just this year have included a teacher who repeatedly sexually molested her own students, a father who slammed his eight-day-old baby into the ground, killing the baby, parents who starved their children to death, and a father who drove his toddler twins off Sunset Cliffs to get back at their mother. Prosecution of these offenders is a cornerstone of our craft. But we also strive to protect. Our office and the county partners behind me participate and promote in the San Diego County Child Victim Witness Protocol that sets the tone for how we all protect kids through our collective and coordinated response to child abuse. This is a team sport, and we check our egos at the door and laser focus on protecting the family in front of us. And lastly, we work collectively as a team to prevent. There are folks here from the Y, and Radies, and Palomar, and so many other nonprofit organizations. As you know, Summer Stephan opened a Family Justice Center in 2022, and we're about to open another. That's a convener for all the partners who work to protect children to be under one roof, and centers like this prove to a community and help kids see that their ACE score is not their destiny. One of our favorite quotes at the DA's office, and Summer's quote, is from Nelson Mandela, that "Our society will be judged by how we treat our most vulnerable citizens, especially our children." Today, our board makes Nelson Mandela proud, and with this proclamation, we appreciate you recognizing and making sure that children are seen and heard and prioritized. Thank you so much. We appreciate this honor.
Accepting this proclamation will be the family of Leon Williams.
Come on up, family. While you're coming up, I'll say it is really an honor to present this proclamation to the family of Leon L. Williams in honor of him today. And I will go through a little bit of his bio, but I want to say and just make clear that Leon served in this building. He passed away at the age of 102 years old, and at his service on the 28th, there were quite a few people who spoke, but they were all from various different paths of life. And it was inspirational for me to see that the same people that worked with him politically and volunteering with him and in his various different capacities that he held while he was with us, that those people spoke in the same way that his family spoke of him. And that is very rare, and it's something that I picked up many things, but that really, really touched my heart, that I know that he was the same all the time. He was resolute, and he was strong, but he was also compassionate, and heard people and listened to people, no matter what he was doing. And so, it was a very bittersweet day, but that's what I saw, and I want the family to know that I appreciate your sacrifice, because it is very, very, very hard to share a person you love so much with an entire region, like everybody, because I'm sure everybody was calling for his wisdom, and just wanting to be around him. And so, as the first Black person to own a home in Golden Hill, the first African-American city council member, the first African-American supervisor, he was all that, but so much more than that. He was a good human being, and so even to see the way the family presented him to us on March 28th was really, really a blessing for me. So I know that we had a proclamation for you all there. I know you have a lot of stuff, I'm sure, but because he made such an impact in this very building, thank you for coming to this building to celebrate him with all of us. And when we get to picture time, if it is okay, I would ask the other supervisors to come and just take a picture as well, because he did so much for all of us to be here in this place that we are in. And, you know, he just leaves behind a legacy of resilience and of service and fighting for justice for everyone. And so today, with that, we honor Leon's extraordinary life and his unwavering dedication to making San Diego a better place for each and every one of us. And we do extend our deepest condolences to the family. Thank you for coming here after the service as a part of his legacy and to stand up for him. He certainly had a legacy of love and leadership. And I'll just read the last two lines of the proclamation briefly and ask if the family wants to say anything. Whereas Leon L. Williams' remarkable 102 years of life touched countless lives, leaving an indelible mark on the city of San Diego, the county of San Diego, and beyond, and his legacy will continue to guide us toward a future grounded in fairness, inequality, injustice, and in unity. So be it proclaimed by the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this eighth day of April 2025 that we commend Leon L. Williams for his unwavering dedication, exceptional achievements, and profound impact on county residents, and do hereby declare this day, he gets another day, this day to be the Leon L. Williams Day throughout San Diego County. Thank you so much.
I'm Penny McNeil, Leon Williams' daughter, and I didn't write a speech, so I'm just going to speak to you guys from my heart, okay? My dad was a kind person. He was very soft-spoken. If any of you ever knew him or whatever, he was just very soft and very firm. Never raised his voice, at least to me. I was such a goody-goody-go two-shoes. But my main thing, even if I had written a speech, I wouldn't be able to read it because I forgot to put in my contacts, so I just see a blur of people, and I'm just going to assume everyone's smiling at me. Some things, though, that I want you to know, because people have talked about Dad, and we were trying to write up his obituary, and I was like, I don't want to write what's been in the newspapers, so I want to do something a little bit different, and quickly, too, okay? Look up how he was involved in helping with Chicano Park. Look up how he was involved in the trolley station. In fact, the one at San Diego State is named after him. He had to go up against, you guys remember Pete Wilson, our mayor, and how he went on to be governor? He had to go up against his friend Pete and say, you know what? I went to San Diego State. We need a trolley up there. We need to be able, the traffic is horrific. Let's see, there's just so many things, but I want you to know that he based his life on kindness. He was actually like that at home, too. And if he wanted you to do something, like I contemplated, I'm not going to say where I moved, but I moved further out because I wanted a new home with new sidewalks, right? I didn't want to live where the sidewalks were old, really weird. But he was like, well, you know, you might want to think about it, because Dad stayed in the 4th district his whole life. Eventually turned to 6th, I think, right? Okay, so anyway. But he's right off of 30th and E. His house is still there. The street is named after him and things like that, and we just love being there. Right now, it feels like a museum because he's not there, but he lived his whole life there, but I want you to know something. I don't know how many of you guys know about restrictive covenants. When he moved into his house, he was the first African-American to move on his street. It was not allowed. On his deed, it said, no, maybe it says, no Negroes, or no coloreds, no Mexicans, and no Orientals. I guess they didn't like rugs, right? And so, he moved over there. He had to sneak in, and he had to get funding. I think he bought the house at the time for like $3,000. He was a vet. He was, oh, Dad was a World War II vet, too. So that didn't really get, you know, we were trying to get that acknowledged just around the time of his passing. So one other thing I want you to know about, my dad, he never told us lies. He was just very, very straightforward, but he did lie in the end. He told us he was going to be around until he was 120. And he went to 102? I think he might have been dyslexic, and maybe he just didn't know. That comes from me being a teacher. I'm like, why did he tell us 120? He wasn't sick either. We just, we miss him, you guys. For anyone who knew him, he was a really nice person, and we just really want to say thank you today for coming out and for honoring him. And I'd like to introduce my family. I have my cousin, Auntie Armstrong. Don't get sad or sappy, okay? This is Dietra Williams, my cousin. She's a county employee. He impacted us, the legacy that he impacted. I was a teacher for juvenile court and community schools, so really sympathetic to the social workers who were up here. Like, I worked with the kids who they put into our system for years. Okay, Grace Lou, and she also too is a county employee. And then we have over here, these are like sister cousins, Brooklyn Huffman, and city or county?
City.
City, okay. And then my husband, Sherman McNeil. So for all the smiling faces, I know everyone's smiling at us or whatever. There's no boos going on. So I just thank you so much for honoring my father and allowing us to be able to have this day for him, and I did it without crying, so thank you all so much.
Yes.
You're up. Joel, you have a surprise proclamation?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I picked up the right surprise. Oh, thank you.
So Joel, Supervisor Anderson has a surprise proclamation.
Yes, I didn't want to let the cat out of the bag, and thank you. So good morning, everybody. I'm late to the podium here, but you can hear me. I am super excited today to recognize an exceptional public safety leader in our community. Sheriff Martinez would like to work her way down here. Cat's out of the bag. So, many of you may not know until this moment, this year marks Sheriff Martinez's 40th year of distinguished service to the residents of San Diego County. She began her law enforcement career with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department in 1985 as a deputy, and worked her way through the ranks, becoming the 31st Sheriff of San Diego County, the first woman to hold the position in San Diego County's history. Throughout her career, Sheriff Martinez has led gang investigations, narcotics enforcement, and criminal intelligence investigations, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to public safety. Congratulations, and for 40 incredible years, Sheriff, and I got out of order here a little bit, we can't thank you enough for your service to the people of San Diego County and for keeping our families and communities safe each and every day. I want to thank you on a personal level, because when I first got elected, we partnered and shut down over 100 illegal pot shops in my district, some of which were located next to elementary schools. And, you know, when I brought it to your attention, it took you about a nanosecond before you had deputies out there shutting that stuff down, and it's made a huge, huge difference, not only in my district, but in Supervisor Montgomery Stepp's district, because Spring Valley and Lakeside were the epicenter in unincorporated alcohol of all this. So your work has made incredibly positive difference. I want to thank you for your partnership and collaboration, and I'm going to read the last paragraph of this beautiful proclamation that, if you wouldn't mind, holding up. And is your husband here? Would he like to come down? Come on down. If there's anybody else from your family or anybody else that you'd like to come down?
I'd love my executive team to come down. Come on, guys.
And I would like to extend an invitation to my colleagues if they'd like to come down for the photo. Be it proclaimed by all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors this eighth day of April 2025 that they commend Sheriff Kelly Martinez for her outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and here do declare this day Sheriff Kelly Martinez Day throughout San Diego County. Thank you, Sheriff. I'm going to ask her to say a couple words. I know that she doesn't have a speech, because she didn't know about this.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. This is incredible. He's correct. I am surprised by this. When my husband walked in, I knew something was up, but wasn't sure. So I want to say that it's been my honor and just an extreme pleasure to be a sheriff's deputy for 40 years. I never thought I would still be here. I certainly never thought I would be the sheriff of this amazing organization. I want to thank my team. Couldn't do all of the work that we're doing right now without them, and I want to thank the supervisors for their incredible support of public safety and our mission in this county, so thank you.
Absolutely. You're living proof that cream rises in the county, so thank you. Let's head over here for a photo.
Okay, thank you all. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the board may take is a referral to the chief administrative officer. Wait till it dies down a little bit. Okay, thank you. Under the board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at today's general legislative session or tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the board at their own convenience. To better facilitate a meeting for non-agenda public comment, we will five speakers in person, five speakers by phone, and the rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. To ensure fairness, the first five in-person speakers for non-agenda public comment will now be randomly selected. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the board's rules of procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you'll be given one warning. And after that warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you'll be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, can you please call the speakers?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 28 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, 17 in person and 11 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers and we'll now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board. I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Oliver Twist, John Brady, and Cesar Javier. I've called your name. Please come forward. They'll be followed by Jeffrey Bloom and Don Wells. Those will be the first five speakers that were randomly selected today.
Hi, good morning. Oliver Twist here. So first of all, real quick about the news system, a little bit of an adjustment. It registered all my positions neutral, so I didn't know if you were aware of that. Next, I wanted to actually take a moment and say something positive. I just wanted this complaint, this is for your county council, for the social media. That was a beautifully written complaint. I cannot tell you the amount of research that went into it in documenting the delayed development of adolescent and teen brains. And you have maybe unknowingly made a beautiful case for why permanent surgical and chemical changes and mutilation is not appropriate for minors for gender care. It is not gender care for a transient type of issue that frequently resolves itself. So thank you for making a beautiful case of why adolescents cannot consent to this type of surgery. Next, I also want to ask for revisions to your public comment, that you require speakers to disclose if they are being paid or compensated in any way. Too many come up here and pretend to be grassroots when they are actually not stakeholders but paid policy advocates. And I think people should have to disclose if they are being paid, whether that is monetary, gift cards, some form of compensation, even maybe a burrito. I see some of the illegal immigrant crowd here is also, and I just wanted to let them know they were at the wrong city last week. The city of Elkhorn had nothing to do with the ICE raid that was unincorporated. You are in the right venue, so ask for the public records now. Budget opportunity cost, today's article in the UT talked about losing $400,000 for this from federal funding, but you could dig into your reserves and make that up. It's a choice of opportunity cost. And to do scare tactics for this article is really just more political theater. Lastly, please bring back clapping to the chamber. It wasn't disruptive for your things today. It's not for us when we, the people, speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, supervisors. John Brady, lived, experienced advisors. I sent to each of your offices on the 21st a memorandum outlining a proposal for emergency housing solutions. I wanted to reiterate that I think that we believe this is an excellent idea, allowing some of the 85,000 recreational vehicle owners in our region to provide those as emergency shelter on private property, their own private property, for a nominal fee of $500 to $1,000 a month, provides an income source for those individuals. It provides an emergency housing solution for people that need emergency housing, that are waiting for emergency housing, particularly those that cannot access shelter for a multitude of reasons. It is a far less expensive option than building shelters. It would provide dispersal throughout the region and it is within your authority under the emergency housing and homeless crisis response powers that are given to you. That memo is in today's minutes and I hope to hear back from you. We think it is a viable proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Cesar Javier, Jeffrey Bloom, or Don Wells. You're welcome to come forward.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Preeta Javier, senior victim of toxicity. We just paid for property tax yesterday. Good morning, good afternoon. I am Preeta Javier. We need help to abate a home-based business home occupation in ceramics manufacturing and KALN operation located at 5238 Strimview Drive, District 9, City of San Diego since The home-based KALN operation had been a potential harm to human and environment as vulnerable residents in very close proximity to the KALN operation. Our medical symptoms now, since 1997 and since 2012, are sneezing, coughing, eye irritation, sore throat, difficulty breathing, dizziness, unusual headaches, heart palpitation, anxiety, fear, and depression. We were hospitalized related to the toxic fumes from the KALN operation. The poisonous gases and airborne toxic particulates inhaled and are possible ingested from KALN operation may lead to respiratory problems such as asthma, pneumonia, and lung cancer. On June 13, 2021, when the homeowner of KALN--
Thank you. Your time is up? Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up? Thank you. Thank you. And Cesar, I called your name, but we're going to let Preeta speak. We'll call you at the end after we're hearing from the first five speakers. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. I have come today to speak to the unsafe camping ordinance adopted by the council. I noticed that--
If you could please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Jeffrey Bloom.
Thank you.
I noted that the council's focus was on fire prevention and that the experts cited in the resolution were from that expertise. I am concerned that the issue of homelessness is not a matter of public safety. Homelessness is a manifestation of the absence of public will and the failure of a collective conscience to address this issue. We hear about and see on TV news actions taken by the government to destroy homeless encampments. These desperately needy persons are abandoned by our community and left to fend for themselves. I'm troubled by the council's approach to our unhoused. Punitive measures like forcefully clearing encampments accomplishes nothing to help our desperate neighbors. They're treated as criminals. Abandoned house pets are treated better than the unhoused in our community. I ask the council to respond to what action the county leadership is taking to protect the homeless community, which I understand numbers more than 10,000 persons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Don Wells. I'm the chief empowerment officer at Just in Time for Foster Youth. I'm here really to talk about the intersection of two things that have already been mentioned today. One is the Child Abuse Prevention Month and also Volunteer Month. Just in Time really combines those two things. We actually mobilize the community. We have about 800 volunteers who create a community of support for young people who are aging out of the foster care system. And we serve about 3,500 youth here in San Diego, between the ages of 18. It was 18 until 27. During the pandemic, we extended it to our alumni who were 27 to 35. And 91% of the young people that we have surveyed who are post-27 say they have broken the cycle of foster care. And what I want to say today is that our secret sauce is community, that having a sense of belonging and connection to the community is what makes that work. And I want to say that instead of talking about our whole philosophy, I brought council members a copy of the book that we wrote. Most of the people who wrote the book have lived experience in foster care, and it's all about empowerment. It's not just protecting young people, but it's empowering them, preparing them, giving them confidence, making them more capable and connected to community. That's what really makes the difference. And so I want to say that one of the things we're focusing on now with breaking that cycle of foster care, we're trying to get more support for our parenting program that gives young people who are new parents that foundation, they need not only resources but relationships and coaching. So I'm here to ask for you guys to support us in continuing to do the work that we're doing, which is community-based, youth-centered, and has measurable impact for the long term. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We're now here from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. All the remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. We will start with our first caller.
Hello, my name is Andrea Ebbing, and I wanted to speak on the Child Prevention Awareness Month. It is two days from my 45th birthday, and I'm actually reporting in from the Sharp Growth SICU unit. On March 26, I had a ruptured brain aneurysm with a 1% chance of survival. My children were abducted from San Diego after I was almost murdered by my county contracted rehab owner X, who provides kickbacks throughout the system to all parties involved in the placement of addicts in diversion programs. I wanted to speak, I laid in my hospital bed last night and I saw an ad for the San Diego District Attorney's Victims Advocates Unit. I was abandoned by San Diego District Attorney's Office despite felony strangulation, felony cohabitation abuse with injury, felony assault with a deadly weapon. My ex drove my children across the country on a permanently suspended license. He violated my restraining order 16 times. Detective Holly Tofoya with San Diego Police Department omitted my children from the report. She allowed my ex to keep his ammunition, his guns, and my abducted children. I was given full custody and protection by the Family Court Judge Peter Gallagher and San Diego Police Department. The parties involved, not all of San Diego Police Department, I will say Harold Oliver and Holland Tofoya, refused to enforce the order. My exes got away with everything. I called and begged for help for years between the DA's office and the public defender's office. And all the while, I found out six months ago, they actually held a child abduction jury trial without ever informing me, the reporting mother. I've not seen my children in a very long time, and this is painful. M. Montgomery Step is my district chair. I called her as I found a child abduction jury trial motion filed in the South Bay Court--
Thank you.
--by the people I have been reaching out to every day. No one would help--
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Please refrain from clapping. That would be disruptive to the conduct of this meeting. Thank you.
Barbara Gordon. As a public health advocate, the expansion of THC, marijuana, and other drugs have overwhelmed our communities and become a regular part of our culture. This new age of industrialized THC allows predatory practices and well-funded campaigns to target vulnerable populations with minimal accountability. Marijuana products, including vapes, concentrates, have been developed to contain nearly pure THC. This makes today's pot very different and more dangerous than marijuana of earlier decades. Yet, these high potency products are advertised as fun or like Cure All for all ailments with no mention of the potential for harm. Many adolescents believe that marijuana is both harmless and healing, as suggested by its advocates. They begin using marijuana, think it will help them cope with anxiety, depression, or boredom. Families are undereducated and have minimal tools and resources to prevent, manage, or recover from the impact of marijuana addictions, like caustic, toxicity, and other destructive behaviors. Policymakers consistently hear from drug advocates and lobbyists, but seldom hear from people dealing with family members addicted to marijuana. I urge the board to have a more honest discussion about the impact of marijuana that it is having on our community and young people. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hi, good morning. My name is Madison Rapp. Today, I'd like to share some important findings from a recent peer-reviewed article that examines the effects of cannabis abuse on cognitive function. The primary psychoactive compound in cannabis, delta-9 tetrohydrocannabinol, or THC, has a significant impact on several cognitive areas, including attention, perception, memory, motor skills, executive functioning, and language abilities. One of the most concerning findings is that early cannabis use, particularly during adolescence, is linked to more pronounced cognitive deficits, including temporary impairments in attention, executive functions, and learning. This means that early exposure to cannabis can lead to long-lasting challenges in key cognitive areas that are vital for everyday functioning. Chronic cannabis use in adults has also been associated with depressive behaviors, highlighting the broader mental health risks tied to frequent consumption. However, there is some good news. Evidence suggests that cognitive function may improve with abstinence from cannabis, offering hope to those seeking recovery. In addition, cannabis consumption can influence decision-making, often altering risk-taking behaviors, especially when contextual and emotional factors, such as peer influence, stress, and emotional processing come into play. In light of these findings, it's important-- In light of these findings, it's important that, as a community, we remain aware of the cognitive impacts cannabis can have, particularly on our youth. By understanding these effects, we can better inform policies and programs that promote education, prevention, and support individuals affected by cannabis use. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Paul LeBolle. Big round of applause to the clerk's office for the new speaking request system. Now, 51% less kids in foster care. Does that mean more kids were moved for abuse? Polinsky Children's Center is a long-term emergency center for the abused and neglected children. State law says that children should not be kept there longer than 30 days, but they are. Then, a series, not just one, of recently filed lawsuits allege that more than 100 children were sexually assaulted over the years by staff members. It's a bloodbath. It will cost us money and reputation. Shut it down. A 2022 KGTV News story paints a picture of a facility totally out of control. The social workers at the Polinsky Children's Center violated state licensing guidelines, and there's a pattern of noncompliance. But it's not just the state calling out the problems with the facility. The county has reported hundreds of children replaced at Polinsky every year, many of whom are under the age of six. With an average stay that exceeds the maximum allowable length of, say, of 10 days for temporary care facility. And people who work at the Polinsky Center say things are weirdly saying. Workers there say the county allowed teenagers, boys, and girls to live in the same housing unit, that there are drugs and alcohol on campus, and a recent number of-
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller this morning.
Gamble here. Okay, I think I might have messed up on that whole login thing, so I do apologize for that. And next question is, if you guys are sticking to the Heritage thing, saying that the vote-by-mail thing is correct, the only ones that they were able to detect were the people who committed the crime stupidly. Like, if you're going to go ahead and fraudulently create ballots using dead people, that could be trapped. There is a death record. We could point that out and find out who it is. But if you're using, let's just say, homeless voters to steal their votes, there is no checking mechanism. That's why the only person that could go ahead and check and see if one person registered 1,000 people in a homeless facility and voted for them, the only person that could check that is Cynthia. And, you know, Cynthia, you just go after, and she'll tell you that did not happen. The only way we could go ahead and verify that that is not true, only, only way, is a DOJ investigation. So if you guys believe that Cynthia did a good job, please ask for a DOJ investigation. Prove I am wrong, that fraud is not going around all the place, or just admit the fact that fraud is happening, and you guys are supporting it and protecting it. It is not that hard to fill out a registration card for another person and gain access to their ballot and vote for it. Matter of fact, if people know someone who doesn't vote, you could actually vote for them. It's against the law, 100%. It's against the law. But Cynthia is allowing this to go happen in wide things. Matter of fact, our turnout is increasing every single year with vote-by-mail because more and more people that don't vote-
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes a request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the session on March 11 and March 12, 2025, and the special meeting of March 4, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery Step. We have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, seconded by Supervisor Montgomery Step. Please vote. Okay.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. Today, that's items 1 through 14. All items on the consent agenda are routine, and we'd be acted upon with one motion. Individuals can comment on consent agenda after supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have any comments on the items on the consent agenda, beginning with Supervisor Anderson?
I have nothing to pull, but I will make the motion to pass them all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Montgomery Step.
Nothing to pull. I will second.
Okay. Thank you very much. I likewise have nothing to pull. We have a motion by Supervisor Anderson and a second by Supervisor Montgomery Step. We'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 20 requests to speak on matters on the consent agenda, 12 in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone on the items on the consent agenda, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I will ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three speakers, Oliver Twist, Consuelo, and Shorok Sadat Najah. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Just quickly letting you know I didn't do-
I did. Let's see that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead and call three additional speakers, Consuelo, Caesar, and Peter.
Caesar? Thank you. Caesar Javier. On item one, this is my sensing as a peace-loving citizen. Is there an imminent war? Why not focus on sheltering issue now? Emergency roof for our homeless San Diegans? Cure the sick? Create jobs? And not weapons of destruction? And what about education, investment, or literacy? This is or are the pillars of a peaceful, orderly community? It will create less and less violence instead of this effort. On number five, gifts and donation? No. We have revenues out of taxes. It's a matter of management. This will only lead to what we call predatory, or we call campaigning, patronage. No, no, no. We have to manage our resources and use it for this public service, noble public service we call governance. On number seven, it's not just nomination, but screening the right person to man and lead this noble commission. This is a lead agency on coastal pollution, just like air pollution, land pollution, air pollution, water pollution. We must select the best man-
Thank you.
-problem solver man.
Sorry, your time is up. Next speaker, Consuelo, followed by Peter Knopper.
Okay, Consuelo. So, number five. So, just, yeah, the whole gifts and donations. To me, it's kind of like, here we go, trying to make up for how crappy this whole system is and how horrific this agency, Polinsky, is. And as far as, yeah, send letters of appreciation to donors. No, man, that's just, you don't know who's donating to, you don't know, like Mr. Javier just mentioned, like, it could be people who are, like, grooming them, or, you know, this is all backwards. This is disgusting considering what those children go through, the fact that there's been so many stories of people who have gone there, who have witnessed beings who have no family, yet these kids, over the weekend, are gone for the weekend. And it's like, where do they go to? They don't have any friends or, they don't have any family to go to, but yet, when they return, they're in a dazed, they look, their eyes are glossy, they're dazed. This is really, really bad. Somebody needs to do something about this whole Polinsky thing. It needs to be defunded. It needs to be shut the freak down. I mean, the fact that these kids don't even, they don't even understand what's going, they're all drugged, they're all in Ritalin, they're all, it's just messed up. And how the system has these families, you know, jumping hoops just to get their kids back. It's like, what is this? So much money, so much wasted money, and it never gets to the source of the problem. And it never will, because this is, this is the system, and this is how it works. And until people wake up and stop voting, because, quite frankly, you're perpetuating all of it.
Thank you. Call three additional speakers. Peter Knopper, Mark, Stephanie Ortega.
Hi. My name is Peter Knopper, and I'm here about, actually, item nine from last month, because I'm still sore about it. It's about L-2, and it's a huge contradiction. Sure, there's a sentence in L-2 that says it doesn't limit giving assistance to federal law enforcement that says local-
Excuse me. Can you pause for a moment? This is the consent agenda, so, can you pause this time? Thank you. So, these comments need to be directed to one of the items on the consent agenda, so that's items 1 through 14 on the consent agenda. If you have comments about an item that's in the board's purview, such as L-2, for example, but it's not on the consent agenda, you can speak during non-agenda public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, on one and two. Military equipment report. This is against Posse Comitatus. That's the constitutional fact that the federal government isn't supposed to be able to use the military against the citizens. But you've mixed the military with the police force, and they're getting federal funding now. So, they're not going to bite the hand that feeds them. See the YouTube video entitled "Military Equipment Public Hearing, April 25, 2024." San Diego spent about $60 million, or 64% of its Federal Cares Act funding, on police in fiscal year 2021. The city also received federal grants and military equipment transfers, including, this is the kind of stuff they have, LRAD Model 100X, LRAD Model 500XRE, 40-millimeter launchers, 40-millimeter launchers projectile launch platforms, MP5 submachine guns, armor-piercing ammunition designed to penetrate hardened steel mediums and continue through with maximum retained weight of the projectile. I have 50 seconds left, so I'm going to skip ahead. There's grenades, there's the Bearcat Armor personal carrier. Because you've let cartel gangs into our country, I understand your desire to militarize the police. However, you shouldn't have let the cartels into the country. That was truly criminal. And this is one of the most dangerous overreach of government that could ever be. And in California especially, where the people don't even have a, get to have a good pistol with more than 10 rounds, being they'll run out of ammunition anytime a bunch of criminals enter their house. They're going to lose. And you've made all this possible. And then to militarize the police and fund them federally. I'm out of time. This is beyond belief. It is so atrocious.
Thank you. Our next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers, allegedly Audra, Ricky, and Pam. If I've called your name, please line up on the arrows. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Ortega, and I'm here from Promises to Kids. Just wanted to comment in agenda number five, in favor, but wanted to provide accurate, updated information regarding the amounts. I have sent the details over to Vice Chair Lawson Reamer's office, as well as Dr. Kim Giardina's office, for reference, but we are on a fiscal year that ends June 30, and we used to have a PCC Advisory Council, so perhaps things fell through the cracks. So, for this current year, this calendar year, the in-kind support was in the amount of $311,929. And including program services, it's $915,840. And again, feel free to look at our audited financials on our current fiscal year, or reference the updated information we've provided. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Where to begin? This is Pam, number five. So, this, you guys proclaim this is the month for child abuse prevention. Why doesn't your staff pay attention to the calendar of the news? When was it? Last week? 50 new lawsuits alleging child abuse against a Polinsky center? And then you guys stand up here and say, oh, yeah, child prevention, Child Abuse Prevention Month. And those are 50 in addition to the 100 already, correct? And this center falls under HHS agency? Is that correct? This county has focused so much attention and money elsewhere, such as on illegal foreigners, that you guys have not watched and taken care of the most vulnerable in our county: the children, the homeless? You guys, who's going to be next? We've had two high-profile resignations, Nora and Luke. Who's next? Who will, where will the buck stop if guilt is found on any of these lawsuits? Which elected, appointed, employed, elected, appointed, or employed individuals will be held accountable? I know the taxpayer will be held accountable if there's any money awarded to any victims, right?
Okay. Next speaker, please. If I've called your name, please come forward. There's the next speaker's coming down. I will call three additional speakers, Keenan R., Itzel Maganda Chavez, and Janika Lorraine Faulkner. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Ricky Robinson here on the Polinsky Center. Sorry for disrupting the meeting earlier. First one I've ever been to. I saw the CWS. Those people have been terrorizing my family, my granddaughters. You have a social worker out of control here. Threatens. We're worried about them trafficking my granddaughter, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, to the Dominican Republic. He comes back. They don't go out of state with the caregivers. They'll, we'll put them with strangers in a foster home, or we'll send them to PCC. Got the texts here. This guy's out of control, David Miller, guarding a lot of them leaves a hate to. It's, I'm a grandfather here. I'm RFA-approved. They won't put my granddaughters with me. They're case fixing, trying to make me a baby rapier, just throwing stuff at a report retaliation because of my First Amendment. It's out of control. These are monsters. We're going to expose them. I've been living in terror with the CWS for months. My granddaughters are being abused. This David Miller guy psychologically abuses my daughter-in-law. Behind closed doors, likes to block her in, likes to lock her in the doors and just make her cry. We have recordings, evidence. It's got to stop. Give us back our granddaughters, our kids. This guy's a monster. So is Ashley Perdell and a bunch of them. They don't work with families. They're terrorists. with families. They're terrorists. I'm done. This is really nerve-wracking for me. I shouldn't be going through this. But we're going to expose them. That is a goal, that is a quest, to expose these monsters.
Kim, do you think you could send someone to go speak with this gentleman and gather some further information today?
Yes, sure, we can do that.
Sir, someone will, on the, on the staff will be coming to speak with you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If I've called your name.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Itzel Maganda Chavez. I'm a resident of Golden Hills. And I'm here to stand in strong support of item 11, and for this board to take action against predatory practices. The floods of January 2024 devastated families across the county, and passing this ordinance will be a step in the right direction to protect the financial well-being and quality of life for all vulnerable families. Thank you today for standing strong and passing this ordinance.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. How come you moved to moi? Good morning, how are you doing? Good morning, supervisors. My name is Janika with the Lion San Diego. I'm here to ask you all to pass this ordinance to protect our most vulnerable communities. There's a strong public demand for action against predatory practices. Our community has expressed concern about the harmful impacts these practices have on their financial well-being and the quality of life. Passing this ordinance will send a strong message that our region stands against exploitation and is committed to protecting its residents from harmful practices. I urge the Board of Supervisors to pass this ordinance, because vulnerable communities need you to be the leaders we elected and stand up for them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite forward the remaining speakers, allegedly Audra, Keenan R., and Chris Kennison. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Keenan Robinson. I'm here today not just as a father, but as a witness to systemic abuse, fraud, and corruption within the San Diego County Child Welfare System. And I'm here to say what you refuse to, that CPS is broken, weaponized, and operating without accountability. Right now, my children have been taken from me and their mother, not because of any abuse, not because of neglect, their own reports confirm that, but because we spoke out, because we challenged a narrative built on lies, perjury, and unconstitutional orders. We face severe retaliation, bias, and case fixing, threats, duress, and coercion by Ashley Purnell, David Miller, Crystal Fallusme, Zella Quino, Nicole Manzigo, Kyle Lavend directly. They used our children as their negotiable instruments. And where did they threaten to send our children? Polinski's Children's Center, a facility this county knows has a long history of sexual abuse lawsuits documented in public news reports. And yet, you still let children be sent there. Lisa Height, guardian alight, I'm supposed to act in the best interest of the children. Instead, rubber stamps the agency's recommendations and threatens to send our children to Polinski's, exhibiting bias and First Amendment retaliation and a direct dereliction of duty. Not only that, we've reported child abuse to these mandated reporters, and instead of them following their own rules and procedures, Crystal Fallusme and David Miller colluded to cover it up, and even went so far as to threaten the mother, whom of which is now in fear for her life, well-being, and her children's life and well-being, to even speak out about it anymore, as she fears they will make her children disappear, as they've already managed to do, despite our parental rights still remaining intact. How is that acceptable? Why are our children being removed from safe homes and sent to places known for sexual abuse? Why are CPS workers allowed to lie under oath and still keep their jobs? Perjury is a crime, fraud is a crime, deprivation of rights under the color of law is a federal crime, and yet this county funds it, enables it, and hides it. Threatening to put someone in jail for exercising their First Amendment rights to freedom of speech is cruel and unusual, and a direct violation of their oath of office. But if either me or you commit such acts, we face consequences. This is telling the world that CPS is above the law, and they can commit crimes, and so can we. CPS is working hand in hand with Polinski's Children's Center. We're moving-
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Chris Kennison, or allegedly Audra. Please come forward.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chris Kennison. I want you to know the community is against predatory practices against our people. We've seen examples of predatory practices in the past, and it's never turned out well. People have expressed their concerns about the harmful impacts these practices have on us financially, financially, and our quality of life. Passing this ordinance will show that our region stands against exploitation and is committed to protecting its residents. I urge the Board of Supervisors to pass this ordinance, because your constituents need the leaders that they elected.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. It is abhorrent, it's appalling, and it is disgraceful that you guys can sit up here and go, we're going to give awards for childhood prevention month. More like childhood, child abuse perpetuation month. Because what's happening, you got, and it's down 50% of the people that are in the system. Are you fucking kidding me? Do you understand what's going on with families? They're being ripped apart. The children are being taken from good families, as you have heard, many come in here today. And yes, you're going to go have them talk to them, but is anything going to be done? No, because CPS needs to absolutely be shut down. The Polinski Center should be shut down and audited. The fact that it is, you're giving them money, they're getting money, and you're giving them awards? This is absolutely appalling. Tara, what if it was your daughter, who was ripped from your arms and sent to a sexual abuse center? You would be up in arms about it, wouldn't you? But it doesn't touch you guys, because you sit up here on this dais, and you act like it doesn't affect people. Everybody is in the crosshairs of this. They are drugging children with psychotropic drugs and antipsychotic drugs when they're being abused. It is ridiculous how inverted this world is, that you guys can sit up here and thank people who are complicit. This is predatory practices, and that's all you guys engage in, and you're not willing to do a damn thing about it, except give awards for doing it. It's, it is so ridiculous, and God is watching each and every one of you. And when you allow this to harm children, you are no worse, I mean, no better, than their perpetrators that are doing it. You're just the same. And you should be held accountable, just the same. You all need to look yourselves in the mirror, and think about the children that are being raped right now.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll start with our first caller, and again, I'll remind all the callers, they should identify which items on the consent agenda they are speaking about.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Kathleen Lippett. The county's DA recognition for its work is one of the few bright spots, because its focus was on behalf of consumers and not a special industry interest. Summer Stefan was voted president of the National Association of DAs. Shockingly, she was not a political appointee. So her success against her politically nominated and funded appointee was a win for the public. Since then, DA Stefan has clearly shown her mettle as the people's prosecutors. Her lifelong goal was to become a DA to stop human trafficking, 90% of whom are Americans. Addicting vulnerable victims to drugs and then putting them into prostitution is our exploitation strategy used by traffickers. The cognitive dissonance between recognizing the work of DA Stefan during Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the county's policies that it continues to pursue are inexplicable. These counties, these county policies undermine and contradict one another, displaying this terrible cognitive dissonance that can only be understood through a lens of economic conflicts of interest. Supervisor Anderson's hiring marijuana industry advocate and leader, excuse me, Galen Young is an insult to the unincorporated residents who had looked to him to protect and serve them, not the marijuana industry. County's ongoing pursuit of imposing marijuana businesses in unincorporated communities despite their opposition, and then impotently claiming that harm reduction as a solution insults the public intelligence. The county used taxpayer money to hire an environmental impact analyst that produced a 1,363-page environmental impact analysis, the largest in the county's history.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Andrea Ebbing, and Summer Stefan is the leader of a Rico enterprise in San Diego, in which she has $2 million in identical financial transactions with Nathan Fletcher and Jim Desmond. The treasurer that carries this out is Todd Gloria's treasurer named Nancy Haley. San Diego's Summer Stefan is the number one trafficker in San Diego. She used to be a part of something called, what I like to call Bermuda Triangle Injustice, with her husband being the chief federal judge of San Diego, and her sister being Rana Stefan, the assistant city attorney. Since my DOJ reports in which I fully thoroughly audited her, in which she is a partner of my county contracted rehab owner X, who gives kickbacks, which is what I'm talking about at this moment, those gifts that we're talking about right now are called kickbacks, and that's for body brokering. And they're body-broking children, and they're body-broking addicts into San Diego, which is being filtered as other revenue, which is being distributed as other pay. I identified $142 million of other pay being distributed throughout the city of San Diego, and $60 million of other pay being distributed through the county of San Diego. This is a fact. You can look it up on Transparent California. What they're trying to do now is obfuscate this. I, my name is Andrea. I have a telephone number, 619-808-9030. And the reason you can't find any of my reports is because I have my own server in the DA's office, at which they used to threaten me when they jailed me for six days under a fake name, Andrea Abena. My name is Andrea Ebbing, okay? And when they jailed me, they took away my social media, isolated me, and brought me down to the point where I am reporting to you from SICU at Sharp Growth Month from a ruptured brain aneurysm. And I guarantee you, the very last thing I'll do is get this information out, and the DOJ reports I made resulted in Judge Dana Sabro stepping down four years early and saying he wanted to give his friend a chance to become the chief justice of San Diego. That is a lie. 14 days later, Tara McGrath herself was fired by Donald-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Bambler here. You know, I listen to everyone talking right now, and the level of corruption, and, I mean, just oversight, much like, is bullshit the fact that you guys could act stupid? It really is. I mean, we could explain every single detail into it, and if you just say, oh, I'm an idiot, you're somehow clear. That's why I played that stupid little game, getting you guys to give me that stupid ass restraining order, so that I could get you on Election Code 1860. But there's a small problem. Our elected officials were selected. People cheated to get them into office, much like taking away our rights. And there's no one going to stop it, because these people are afraid that if they go ahead and try to stop this, that they won't be elected again, that they'll lose all their power. So if they go ahead and bring light to the fact that homeless, all these different criminal organizations are funneling and manufacturing ballots in order for them to continue this trafficking organization, yeah, they just want the power or the money that goes along with it, and they don't give a shit about our kids. They don't give a shit about us. They don't care about our land. They don't care about anything about us, because they're willing to allow people to cheat the system and turn that out of their head. Now, if you guys don't want to do anything, when a DOJ investigation does take place, I will be suing you for that. Because at that point, there won't be any excuses that you have. None, zero, nada. Not even a corrupt judge will be able to defend their thing. If I go too early, that won't happen. But if I wait until after the DOJ investigation, you're fucked. You're going to jail.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
All aboard Agenda Item Five. Gifts are great, but data from the police department over three years shows that more than 2,000 called for service originated in Polinski from disturbing the peace, to threats with weapons, and runaways, and they're getting into the community. And that's a continuing thing. Shut the Polinski Center down and return the gifts. Keeping it open is costing you, us, and the inmates. Now, gifts to the library, these are good, and the one thing in the library is, we can do without the display of graphic kids' books on the special shelves up front. Nominations to the Cal Coastal Commission, and to, already sent your nominations to the state, I don't know why you're putting it on the agenda. Frankly, it sounds like another Brown Act violation. You shouldn't be nominating yourselves to Coastal Commission anyway. It's a conflict of interest. You should be paying attention to our needs, not the Coastal Commission. You shouldn't nominate mayors and council members for the same reason. You should nominate subject matter experts. Number 10, Mermaid's Epicenter. Belief is for 45 years. For defined use, this is okay. But for the use of Center for Community, his needs will change with every generation or more often. It is not a, you know, good thing. Then you want to amend the contract to increase the not exceed amount by-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Yes, hi. My name is Ilka Weston. One, who is running the meeting before my time is started? Because people are jumping all over all the agenda items, and there seems to be nobody keeping people on point. What agenda item are we on before I start speaking?
This is Consent. You can speak on any of the items. So it's items one through 14.
Okay. I liked it better when we went agenda item by agenda item, because this isn't getting anything done. So I'm going to go ahead and, one, bring up the point that we need to do what they have done up in the San Mateo area, and we need to put our, our sheriff currently on suspension. And I'm so ashamed of you guys for giving an award to a sheriff that has mounting deaths under her while she was under Gore, and now under herself. And the fact that you guys are neglecting that and awarding her money means that you guys do not care. And the only person on that board that voted against giving money to the sheriff was county supervisor, board member Monica Montgomery. But she is always one that we can count on. But I'm going to go ahead and also use the rest of my time on Polinski Center. I have such compassion for the people that have dealt with this. My entire joy when I became a mother was my son, and every other child that was hanging out with us. I did not drink, I did not partake in any illegal drugs. And then one night, after I had been, three weeks before, assaulted by an officer for stopping him from harassing a Hispanic kid who got a ticket, I felt like I was needing to take care of my mental health because of what I went through, because I couldn't sleep. And I called my mom to pick up my son, and yes, my mom got a little, very sweet German lady, but nonetheless, because of my mom-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
And with all the consent, item number 12, conflict of interest codes. I'd like to read from the staff report regarding this very important and serious consideration of conflict of interest, because we in the public are gravely concerned that the decision-making that happens within the supervisors' offices are made without impact from people who have made money from items that come before you all for consideration. And it mentions that they want to make sure that, that anything that comes, that's involved with the board, that there wouldn't be a risk of a biased decision-making that would sacrifice the public interest in favor of someone's private financial interest, and to avoid actual bias or the appearance of possible improprieties, that- avoid actual bias or the appearance of possible improprieties, that we would get all the information we would need. And it goes on to say that, um, this would enable the county to provide transparency and accountability for, to all of its residents. My concern is that we have someone within Supervisor Anderson's office who represented the marijuana industry for years and spoke of it in such positive terms and apparently was paid because he always seemed to have a position. And now he's advising one of our supervisors on these very issues. And we here in the back country don't want marijuana businesses, so we, we're at a loss to understand how someone with that type of financial interest ended up in a supervisor's office. And these conflict of interest codes can't come too soon to help all of us who are concerned about there being, uh, possible improprieties in decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Hi, good morning. My name is Becky Rapp and I'd like to speak to Items 12 and 13. I too wanted to bring up a serious concern regarding a potential conflict of interest regarding Supervisor Anderson's newly appointed Director of Policy, Darren Young. Mr. Young has a well-documented history as a marijuana lobbyist and advocate. He's worked closely with marijuana businesses, led industry organizations, and played a key role in shaping marijuana policy in San Diego. We must recognize the significant ethical dilemma in having someone with such deep industry ties now serving as a key policy advisor to an elected official who is specifically responsible for the unincorporated area in our county. How can the public be assured that those decisions made regarding marijuana policy are in the best interest of all San Diegans rather than serving the interest of, the interest of Mr. Young and the industry he represents and promotes? Mr. Young's past work lobbying for expanded retail permits, consumption lounges, and reduced restrictions on marijuana businesses raises legitimate concerns about his ability to provide impartial, balanced policy advice. Your responsibility is to ensure that the government remains free of undue influence from industries seeking to form policies that are to their advantage. I urge you to recognize that this conflict of interest and please consider stronger ethical safeguards to prevent industry profiteers from directly influencing policies that benefit their former or possibly future associates. Please put the people in the unincorporated area of the county as your priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes your request for public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Um, is there, we, oh, we had a motion. We had a motion from Supervisor Anderson and a move, uh, second by Supervisor Montgomery Sepp. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're now gonna be moving on to discussion items. And so we begin with Item 15, Defending Due Process Rights and Preventing Unjust Deportations in San Diego County. How many speakers do we have?
Thirty-three.
Okay, so given the timing, just for my colleagues to plan accordingly, we'll do this item and then we will take lunch. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 33 requests to speak on Item 15, 21 in person and 12 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 134 ecomments, 95 in support, 34 in opposition, and three neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on Item 15 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will be limited to one minute for your comments. And we will ask you to please state your name for the audio record. I'd like to first invite forward Oliver Twist, Consuelo, and Cesar Javier. If I've called your name, please go forward.
I beg your pardon, Cesar Javier. I would like to receive the presentation first and be able to participate actively and fruitfully.
Uh, so there's no presentation because this is a board-initiated item? So this is my item?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I can proceed. This is from my historical review, Fall of the Roman Empire. It is corruption. It is the neglect of invasion, of refugees that destroyed the Roman Empire. If this deportation is unjust, then let's not do it. It is not pending. We have to deport those who entered illegally. Let us do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning, Oliver Twist. First of all, I've been imploring you, please quit taking on obligations, or not even an obligation, something that you choose that's outside the scope of your duties. You're subsidizing the other entities like the city of San Diego. And I have to tell you, you're broke. You're in deficit spending. Quit spending money on once. There's an opportunity cost for the money on this. You could be putting it for that surveillance gap for the wastewater. You could put it towards your new lab, or you could just simply reduce your deficit spending. Also, your 2023-2024 report says you seek to increase data collection, so I'm asking you to do that by adding longitudinal studies to see any of the clients that you've helped go on to commit a crime in our country. That needs to be added. Lastly, it's ironic today that the man who is alleged, the illegal immigrant who's alleged to have broken into the Navy SEALs home and assaulted that five-year-old, his readiness conference hearing is today. There is a cost for your policies and that little girl is suffering.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Mark Alexander and Jeffrey Bloom. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Okay, so this is defending due process rights and preventing unjust deportations in our county.
Please state your name.
Consuelo. Uh, let's see. So, um, yeah, it's, uh, sounds like, um, you know, just more waste of our tax dollars. This is for, uh, it sounds like a square, so everything, so it's, it's just, uh, I'm just gonna read what, oh, uh, let's see. So you don't, yeah, just sounds like a bunch of waste. 66% or 68% of its, okay, uh, whatever, sorry.
Next speaker, please.
Jeffrey Bloom. I'm in support of the spirit of this agenda item. Of course, it sounds kind of like motherhood and apple pie. I would like to know what action the county's gonna take to protect these due process rights and to prevent deportations. I know that the city has previously, previously been designated as a sanctuary city for, uh, people that may be in the country without due authorization. I don't know what action the county's gonna take. For example, will instruction be given to sheriff's deputies or other officials to carry out the letter and the spirit of the council's response? And I look forward to hearing what that response might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If I've called your name, Mark Alexander. Also call two additional speakers, Jerry Luckenbaugh and Youssef Miller. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Mark, one minute is not reasonable. So if a kingdom be divided against itself, it cannot stand. Individuals with, this is a quote from your overview, "Individuals with serious criminal convictions such as murder, rape, or drug trafficking are already ineligible to remain in the country under existing immigration laws and should not be accepted as ILDP clients." Here's the problem with that, these news articles. So here are the titles for the news articles. Obviously, I don't have time to go into too much description. Children are being raped, police officers are being shot, citizens are being murdered, there's an unbelievable amount of trafficking, and your policies have made this occur. So whatever you're, you're saying in your agenda doesn't matter. It's bullshit. This is what's happening because of you. And Jim had an agenda item to stop this, but instead of amending it to protect people who work, you just got rid of it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome to come forward in any order. If I've called your name, thank you.
Hello, hi, members of the board. My name is Jerry. I'm representing a nonprofit called San Diego for Trans Rights. And I'm here to say that the trans community stands with the rights of migrants in San Diego and further, just, and the erosion of due process for this audience is a direct analog to how we as a group have been oppressed and have been denied due process ourselves. Historically, we have been subject to violence in this, in the same types of systems of policing that have been brought against and co-attached to the militarism against migrants at the border. Thanks.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call three additional speakers, allegedly Audra, David Vance, and Aaron Gahn. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Youssef Miller, North County Equity and Justice Coalition, I support this fund. I think it's important that not only do we think of what citizens deserve as far as due process, but anyone on the soil of our country should experience that due process. Why is that important? Because we have a lot of people who are actual citizens as well, who fall up under these sweeps that ICE do and impacting families and destroying families. In sweeping that, they cause up a lot of people who deserve due process. And if you're not giving this process to even those who are on this soil, that's, that's a problem. We've done this before. Back in the 30s, when we started sweeping up all our people with Latino last names, we sent all these people, deported them all to Mexico. A lot of them, possibly half of, of about a million of people that we swept up in the 30s, half of them were American citizens. And we don't know where they went. So this due process issue is one that we've made a mistake before.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name's Aaron Nung. My pronouns are he and they, and I'm a resident of District Three. I'm with the San Diego LGBT Community Center. My father's a Cambodian refugee, and since the first significant arrival of Cambodian refugees to the US in the mid-1970s, we've experienced firsthand the harm incarceration, detainment, and deportation can cause to folks of all legal statuses. Youth in communities affected by deportation and incarceration face lower rates of access to and attainment of higher education, higher rates of mental health disorders, housing instability, and more. The Immigrant Legal Defense Program is an invaluable resource for immigrants and refugees undergoing removal proceedings. Most who are victims of displacement by imperial warfare, persecution, and economic hardship. Immigrants are integral to the cultural and economic makeup of our county, and we must continue providing resources to protect folks seeking a better life. I urge the county to continue fully funding the ILDP. I am hopeful that when the CIO reports back in 45 days with options to codify this into board policy, it will ensure folks who have been here for many years have access to legal counsel regardless of detainment status. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is David Vance. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm speaking in support of Item 15 on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. Immigration is an LGBTQ issue. LGBTQ people who are seeking asylum due to threats of violence in their home countries deserve access to legal counsel. LGBTQ people disproportionately lack access to good-paying jobs, higher education, housing, and healthcare. When LGBTQ immigrants don't have the financial means to support their basic needs, they certainly don't have the financial means to fund their own legal counsel. Programs like the ILDP are needed to ensure that everyone has access to due process and that immigrants are provided with legal counsel before they enter removal proceedings. We support the expansion of this program to those who are not currently detained and the continuation of the program for those who are detained. By removing barriers to accessing the ILDP services, San Diego County will help ensure a just and fair process for all. While we understand community concerns about the criminal bars, we look forward to the report back in 45 days from the CIO, that we hope will reflect what criminal bars will be included in this new version of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Nicole Lee, Anna R., and Isadora Magali.
My person uses his name, Audra. Where's Jim? Trying to fix his racketeering little scandal that he's got going on? Joel, are you gonna abstain and put Tara in a corner like she put Jim in before with her items so that it can't come back? Because you're sitting here, did you call the five-year-old little girl and tell her that you're gonna be doing this? Right? It's okay that you've been raped. Don't worry about it. We're gonna make sure that he stays here and has a criminal defense lawyer. Right? It's good. It's funny because it's called illegal immigration for a reason. And it is appalling that it's like, you wanna defend these people over the children that are being raped right now in your county services? How cool is that, right? As long as you protect people that violate the law, right? And not do it the right way. But, you know, you don't do anything for the children, even the children that have been trafficked throughout this human trafficking, you know, agenda that's taken place over many years that you guys want to continue. So there's a special place in hell for all of you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I'm a resident in District One. I've been in San Diego for almost five years. I'm a community organizer with ACE. I support the continuance and expansion of the Immigration Legal Defense Fund because it helps ensure everyone has due process. It helps ensure every single person is able to defend themselves in court. It helps ensure equity and fairness in the US legal system. It helps ensure that our communities, loved ones, friends, and families don't get prosecuted, especially for crimes they didn't commit. Innocent until proven guilty, this is what our US judicial system is supposed to operate, but we know it seldom works that way. Right now, we're seeing people getting detained even though they, they have the legal documentation. We're seeing people deported without access to effective legal counsel. With the expansion of the Legal Defense Fund, we can at least prevent some of these injustices from happening again. I urge you to support this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you, both members. My name is Anna Ramos. I'm an organizer with the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. I'm here to stand in strong support of the expansion of the ILDP. But I just wanna say, no person is illegal. This vocabulary is very dangerous. Folks might be undocumented or, uh, you know, without the proper identification, but no human is illegal. I just wanna make that clear. In my job as a community organizer, I come across so many families who are either undocumented or know someone who's undocumented themselves, and they have so many hurdles. So expanding this program is going to be able to help all of our San Diego residents, not just citizens. They are also our constituents. And right now, we have the opportunity to make that change, and I hope we don't waste it. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll call three additional speakers, Pam T., Britta Lindstrom, and Anna Rebelis. If I've called your name, please go forward.
Hi, my name is Isa, and I'm a community organizer with ACE. ACE is a multiracial democratic nonprofit community organization that builds power to fight and stand for economic, racial, and social justice. We're like a union but for the community, and many of our community members in the South Bay come from mixed status or undocumented families. Migration isn't a crime, but we know that it's treated like a crime. People who come to the US are fleeing from violence and economic crisis that are caused by US economic and military intervention around the world to begin with. When families and individuals arrive in this country, they're met with labor exploitation, abusive landlords, rents, and a cost of living that never stops going up. A militarized police force and now fears on the rise as limited protections for them and their families are under attack. We need to make sure that we defend people's right to due process and defend their constitutional rights because we know human rights don't just apply to US citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pam, no. First, we're one nation of Americans under God. No other nation is more compassionate, more generous towards less fortunate nations. America welcomes individuals entering this country legally who wish to contribute to our nation, support our values, learn our language, respect our unique religious heritage. our nation, support our values, learn our language, respect our unique religious heritage, and play by the rules. Funny, Tara, your statement in this agenda item of being a bi-national region seems to eliminate and make invisible the legal immigrants in this county not from Mexico. It's great, though, that on Pages 3 and 4, eligibility for immigration relief would exclude illegal foreigners with criminal convictions. But ironically, these criminal illegal foreigners, the ones that murder, rape, and traffic drugs, are exactly who the county's sanctuary policy desires to protect. No county or state funding anymore. The correct name of this project should be the Illegal Immigrant Legal Defense Program. This item should also encourage use of the CB1 app for self-deportation. This would solve so many problems per individual and for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Britta Lindstrom, and I am in opposition of this. Let's stop pretending that this is about due process. I would like to address the deliberate misrepresentation of this proposal. Supervisor Lawson Reamer's email to constituents spins this as defending due process and protecting immigrants. This actually is about increasing the amount of our tax dollars that we are already paying for illegal immigration legal defense. The public is being misled. Just look at the majority of comments supporting this proposal. People are representing phrases like "due process" and "we're a country of immigrants" because they have been sold a false narrative. San Diegans are generous and compassionate, but they deserve honesty. They need to know what they're really voting for. Please, be transparent, speak the truth, and be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, Magdalena, I'll call Magdalena Palveras, Lilly Irani, and Emigdo M. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Mi nombre es Magdalena.
Okay. My name is Magdalena.
He vivido en National City por 40 años.
I've lived in National City for 40 years.
Y soy miembro de la asociación ACE. Y vengo a apoyar a la propuesta para tener más recursos para los inmigrantes en su defensa legal.
Okay, and I'm a member of ACE. And I'm here, I wanted to go ahead and support, you know, this proposition so we could have more, like, defense, you know, for their legal status.
Y que no separen familias.
And that way, families will not be separated.
Porque como en estos días están teniendo redadas donde trabajan.
Okay. Right now, what's happening, they're going to the workplaces to get them.
Y hasta los que estamos aquí legalmente tenemos temor.
Even though all of us who are here legally, you know, we have fear.
Y este bueno, ahorita como está pasando tantas cosas así, ya tiene miedo uno de ir hasta el mandado.
And because there's so many things that are going on, you know, you just get afraid, even if you wanna go to the grocery store.
Bueno, ahorita están muchas personas que están en su proceso de legalizarse, y aunque tenga uno este, este su proceso, se los llevan, no preguntan.
Okay. Even though we have a lot of people right now that they're in the process of becoming legal, you know, they're gonna be legalized, and they're in the process of getting there, people don't even ask them about that. They just take them away.
Está como dicen, primero te llevan, te avientan a otro. Bueno.
Okay. First, they take you away. I know. Sorry about that.
Está bien, ¿le ayudo, señora?
Next speaker, please. I'll call the remaining speakers, Anna Rebels, Lilly Irani, Emigdo M., and Vanessa Regosa. If I've called your name, please come forward.
¿Le ayudo? En cuanto no payamos.
Buenas tardes.
And good afternoon.
Soy Anna Maria Rebels. Este vengo de la comunidad de National City.
And my name is Anna Maria Rebels, and I'm coming from the community of National City.
Y estoy en la organización ACE.
And I also, you know, belong to the organization of ACE.
Y vengo a apoyar la, el Propuesta 15.
And I'm here to support Proposition 15.
Que es para expandir fondos y dar más defensa legal.
And this is to go ahead, you know, and expand, you know, funds and give more legal defense.
Y prevenir las deportaciones.
In order to avoid deportations.
Que no las están haciendo, dando, no están dando la oportunidad de un proceso legal.
Because they're not giving any opportunity for the due process rights.
Faltando a la enmienda 4 y 5.
And this is against Amendment 4 and 5.
Dividiendo familias.
And this is dividing families, separating families.
Y rompiendo comunidades.
And also breaking, you know, communities that are made.
Y estamos, están, los niños están sufriendo mucho, son los que más están sufriendo.
And children, they are suffering a lot. They are the ones that are suffering the most.
Viendo a sus papás que están batallando y que en pánico por la situación que están viviendo.
And they see their parents struggling and panicking because of the situation that they're under and living under.
Y esos niños en el futuro son nuestra, son el futuro del mundo.
And these are children that are the future of the world.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. ¿Está bien? ¿Le ayudo, señora?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. If I've called your name. I've called Alexander, Lilly Irani, Emigdo M., and Vanessa Regosa.
Hi, good morning. My name is Vanessa Regosa. I'm a proud ACLU member and a county employee. I come to you today as an immigrant and community member. Due process is a cornerstone of justice, ensuring that every individual, regardless of their immigration status, is treated fairly and is afforded the basic rights guaranteed under the law. This includes the right to a fair hearing, to be informed of the charges against them, and right to legal representation. Many individuals facing deportation have lived in the country for years, contributing to society, raising families, and building lives. Those of you that are for the expedited removal, that argue immigrants are criminals and need to go back to their country, that also pick and choose isolated cases where immigrants committed a crime, disregard that per the FBI's, excuse me, uniform crime reporting, white individuals have historically accounted for the largest percentage of the arrest. These lies are exposed. Deportations were never about just going after criminals. This is to justify a racist agenda and removing anyone that is a person of color. Excuse me. The biggest threat to the United States of America is not an immigrant, it's a racist man's ego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Lilly Irani, and I'm speaking in my personal capacity as a human being and a resident of San Diego. And I happen to also work at UCSD as a professor. My family are immigrants from Iran, so I have firsthand experience in how difficult the immigration system is to navigate legally, and how much money people have, and whether they went to school in English should not be the determinant of whether they have the opportunity to go through the immigration process legally. And so I'm glad the county is considering investing in this, and I fully support it. We are not rapists, we are not murderers, we are all people in a community trying to figure out how to live in this world together. And so I hope the more people can get with the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Karina Pugh.
Good morning. My name is Karina Pugh, pronouns she/her, and I am speaking in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. Immigrants are integral to the diverse tapestry of San Diego County. Immigrants have contributed $54.3 billion to San Diego's GDP and have paid $2.1 billion in state and local taxes in 2016 alone. Programs like the ILDP are vital to immigrants. In order to ensure people have access to due process, they should be provided with legal counsel before entering removal proceedings. This program has been vital to LGBTQ+ asylum seekers who have been detained or faced removal proceedings in the past. LGBTQ+ individuals disproportionately lack access to legal counsel. Having an immigration attorney on call is not a priority when they're trying to sustain housing, healthcare, and other basic needs. The ILDP's expansion to include non-detained immigrants will allow numerous San Diego immigrants to gain access to essential life-changing immigration services. The center urges the county to continue fully funding the ILDP at the $5 million level and will return to advocate in the upcoming budget hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller. As a reminder, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And we'll remind you to please mute your TV or live video stream before you begin speaking.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and Supervisors, my name is Felicia Gomez, and I am the Immigrant Rights Senior Policy Advocate at the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. We are neutral on the board letter regarding the Immigrant Rights Legal Defense Program, or ILDP. We fully support the county's ILDP. However, any attempt to narrow the eligibility criteria seeks to roll back hard-fought wins achieved in its initial passage in 2021. We worked hard to achieve an ILDP in San Diego County that is a universal merit line program that provides legal representation for all immigrants in detention. All people, regardless of who they are, where they're from, or what they've experienced, deserve due process. We are deeply disappointed to see this board letter direct the chief administrative officer to explore ways to narrow the program's eligibility criteria, specifically seeking to exclude people based on any convictions and/or their income level. Excluding certain immigrants in the ILDP means that some will be forced to represent themselves in extremely complicated and high-stakes proceedings. Even if a person's conviction appears to make them ineligible for immigrant.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
How you guys doing? Apparently ACLU was the one that made it so that when I was assaulted by most likely a gang-related illegal alien over here, right in front of 7-Eleven, the guy tried to attack a little girl. I stood in the way, but I knew if I laid one single hand on him, ACLU would have been jumped all over him to defend his ass. This guy had tattoos all over those places. The guy took a strike to my head, hit me, punched me right in the face. I knew if I touched him, it would cost San Diego a lot of friggin' money. The guy then proceeded to go towards my car, which I stood in between. At that point, he took another swipe at my head. At that point, I grabbed my phone and I called 911. I told him, called the cops, and then said, get.
Now hear from the next speaker.
I am very much in favor of due process, and frankly, if you are not in favor of due process, you are anti-American and a traitor to this country. The whole point of due process is so that people have their day in court, and we can essentially see, like, who's innocent, who's guilty, what happened, what didn't happen. Without due process, we can hear claims made by the previous commenter, Gambler, and they can go completely unvetted. The whole point of due process is so that we can see if someone actually did something or not. Without due process, people like Gambler can just make baseless claims like that, and then the person they're making claims about is just deported without any response or without any due process. That is unacceptable. And I don't wanna hear any complaining about, oh, this is about protecting dangerous criminals. Without due process, we don't know whether they're act.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
I am firmly in support of the constitutional right to due process. I support expanding ILDP. Growing up in California, I went to school with many kids whose parents were working tough jobs to support family members here and in Mexico. I knew that immigrants, documented or otherwise, were important to the success of our state. As an adult, I moved to Massachusetts. My daughter's good friend was a popular funny boy named Gustavo. Gustavo's mother brought him to the United States when he was a toddler. She was escaping the dangers of Guatemala. Gustavo was trapped in the limbo of the DACA status. The only home he'd ever known was Massachusetts. At the end of high school, he watched all his friends go to college. He was sad, he had no path. A year after high school, he took his own life. After moving back to California, I got involved in San Diego Asylum Seekers Program. I helped asylum seekers connect with their family sponsors while they waited for a legal day in court. We follow the law, we gave people a chance for due process. I'm testifying today to beg the county board of supervisors to let San Diego be.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller. You may begin.
Yes, hi, sorry. My name is Ilka Weston, and I find it atrocious that we're actually even considering not giving due process. For something like this to be on the agenda and to neglect people, and especially what we're finding, children being accosted by ICE agents, I mean, that should never happen. We also were talking on Holinsky Center today, and when we're talking about where these children go, or how they criminalize parents, or how they criminalize the vulnerable, you know, it's the percentages, if you look them up, are clear, that raped by a white man who is not, you know, the, you know, I see people attacking people because of their tattoos. And there are more white people that actually assault people, try to rape people, than immigrants ever do. And the other thing I definitely wanna utilize with my.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Mustafa Azami. I'm a resident of District 9. I'm neutral on this item because our region is stronger when we ensure due process for all people. This Immigrant Rights Legal Defense Program helps to close the gap in legal representation and make our immigration system more just and more human. We support opportunities to intentionally expand this program to 90, 10 individuals and to research state funding options for the program. We also support the county secure $5 million for the program in this year budget cycle to ensure its sustainability. Access to counsel is a civil right that should be afforded to everyone, regardless of who they are, their income level, or if they have a conviction. Therefore, I, the San Diego County Board of.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Big picture. Bits of this sound good, but overall, it's a giveaway of our taxpayer dollars to defend people making twice the average median income who don't need our financial support, and the CEO would be asked for anything. Targeted updates, so-called category legal defense fund, community needs, funding opportunities, list goes on. Then the board letter, the board letter says that 66% of its clients' cases reach a decision, get judicial relief, without saying what the relief was, and no documents are attached. So we don't know whether this is really worth it, but that people basically regular income get to use our taxpayer dollars for it. Please reject this. You need to balance the budget. Crazy. I think anyone who votes.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair.
But this program is not just effective, it's cost-efficient. Legal services under the ILDP cost 40% less than other public defender programs. So today, I'm here to ask my colleagues to build on that success. I'm asking for your support for a simple, smart, and deeply just and timely expansion of the Immigrant Legal Defense Program, because right now, the stakes could not be higher. Right now, across our country, people are being swept into deportation without even being detained. They are not criminals. They are not a danger to our community. Many are longtime residents, parents of U.S. citizens, and workers with deep roots in our community. They are people who have every right to be in this country. But under federal policies from the Trump administration, they are being deported without a hearing, without warning, and without an attorney. This is a direct attack on the Constitution and the promise of due process. So let me tell you what that looks like. Kilmar Garcia, a lawful permanent resident, was wrongly deported to El Salvador and thrown into a maximum-security prison. The federal government dismissed this as a, quote, "administrative error." Last week, a federal judge ordered Kilmar's return to Maryland. The White House then said that the judge has no jurisdiction over or authority over the country of El Salvador. But if an attorney had been provided in this case, if Kilmar had had the legal representation that he deserves, he would be home with his family instead of in a maximum-security prison in El Salvador today. Jasmine Mooney, a Canadian actress with valid documentation, was detained right here in our county, at San Ysidro, for 12 days with no charges, no explanation, and no legal recourse. No access to an attorney was granted. Andrea Jose Hernandez Romero, a gay makeup artist, was detained while crossing the border to attend a scheduled asylum appointment in San Diego. He was seeking asylum for persecution in his home country because he is gay. Now he's in prison in El Salvador because has tattoos that say "Mom and Dad" were unbelievably and absurdly cited as proof that he is a gang member. Again, he did not have access to an attorney, so his due process rights were denied. These are not isolated incidences. They are signs of a system that is broken at its core. The expansion I am proposing today would extend access to legal defense for individuals at risk of deportation in San Diego County, even if they are not in detention. It would prioritize cases where people have a real legal pathway to stay. It would exclude individuals with serious criminal conventions who are already legally barred from staying in this country, from receiving legal representation, and it would add a sliding scale fee so the program can be extended further while using our taxpayer dollars wisely, remaining fair and financially sustainable. This is responsible, this is targeted, and most importantly, it's the thing we must do to protect and defend the values we claim to uphold. Because the Constitution is not a suggestion, due process should not be optional, it should not depend on whether you come to your asylum hearing with a law degree and an English education. Justice should not depend on your income, your immigration status, or whether or not you can afford an attorney. So today, we have a choice. Will we defend the Constitution in San Diego County, or will we allow fear, politics, fear-mongering, and federal overreach to trample on due process rights in our county? So I'm here to ask my colleagues to stand with me in fighting for justice, in fighting for due process, and fighting to defend the Constitution in San Diego County. I hope my colleagues can do the same. Thank you very much. I would like to make a motion for this item. Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery, step.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. I want to second your motion. I do want to just point out, just in the, in the spirit of fairness around the budget allocation, how does, how does that work with our upcoming discussions?
Thank you so much. So included in this would be budget request, to continue funding the program at the same level that has been funded historically. It's been at a $5 million funding level. That is why we were really thoughtful in how to keep the program within the existing funding envelope, but make our dollars go further. That was a lot of the thinking behind some of the kind of changes that might look a little bit minor, but are actually really important. So for example, a sliding scale for representation, because we are proposing to expand the program to the non-detained population, but not increase the budget. So how do we do that? We have to make our dollars go further. So the sliding scale would ensure that if you can't afford an attorney, you get an attorney. But if you have the financial resources to pay for an attorney, then you would have to do that yourself, very similar to how our current federal defender system still operates. Similarly, one of the reasons, I mean, not the one, the core reason for constraining defense to, and making sure that individuals who have a serious criminal convention, conviction already on their record, who we know would not be able to prevail in their case because they are legally barred from staying in this country by federal law, the reason they would not be included in the scope of the program is, again, because we're now looking back at the data, and we see that those cases failed, obviously, because the people, individuals were not eligible to stay in the country, so we want to make those dollars go further. So we really did try to think about, given the current budget climate, how do we make our dollars go as far as possible, staying within the existing envelope of $5 million of the program?
I got it, and I hear you loud and clear. I'm fully supportive, and again, I'll second your motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Supervisor Montgomery Step. Supervisor Anderson, any comments? Okay. We have a motion of a second. Please call the vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion fails due to the lack of affirmative votes. Supervisor Anderson voting no, and Supervisor Montgomery Step and Vice Chair Lawson Reamer voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. It is now 12:30, so we will break for lunch. We will be back here, I'm going to ask my colleagues, would you prefer to come back at 1:45, I'm sorry, at 1:15 or 1:30? You have a preference? Supervisor Anderson?
I'm going to make it a full hour.
A full hour. People can eat a full lunch. I'll see you back here at 1:30. Thank you.
Good job, Joel.[1513.33]